Okay, good evening everyone and welcome all the members including President Shivanty of Channak City and of course Ranjana and we have Gautam also, they are from different clubs. Shonjoy, is he from your club Shivanty?
No.
Also, okay, hi Shonjoy, Shonjoy. So I welcome everybody present and I'm going to call the Calcutta Metro City 1163rd regular meeting to order. Calcutta City members who are present, can you please confirm the minutes of the 1162nd regular meeting which was shared in the group? If you can confirm that?
Confirm, confirm.
Confirm, thank you. I'll hand over to our club secretary, Rotaryian Deepu Mollik to conduct the club business. Deepu, all yours.
Thank you, good evening to all and welcome to all the members of Channak City and the president. First, read out the Rotary four-way test. The four-way test of Rotary, of the things we think, say or do. Is it the truth? Second, is it the fair to all concerned? Will it be goodwill and better friendships? Will it be beneficial to all concerned? Thank you. Now, our next regular meeting, that is 1164, will be held at the residence of our club member Rotaryian Rajneesh Kapoor on Saturday 14th of June at 7pm. This is a physical meeting and this will be an in-person meeting to celebrate a club charter day. Now I hand over the proceedings to club president, Sunanada.
Yes, thank you and for members who are present today, please make a note of 14th of June will be the celebration of a charter day at Rajneesh's house. So please make a note for that day and save that date for the, this particular meeting. Okay, now this is, we are planning from our club on 27th of June as part of a celebration of the 30th charter anniversary. We're planning a musical evening which will be held at the Rotary Shodun. On, the time will be decided later on, I think it should be around, I guess 6 o'clock in the evening, but we will decide on the time and this is in remembering RD Burman and Sholil Choudhary. So since a lot of members are present here from other clubs including Channak City, already I'm extending an invitation to all of you to participate in this particular gathering and if you all would like to also participate like with your, with a song or which has to do with either Sholil Choudhary or RD Burman, please do join in. So this is a invitation which will, a formal one will also be going out later on to all of you, but this is just to let you know that this is what we are planning and we'll come up once we have everything in place, we'll come back and be in touch with you. I have and that's all that is from my club for today and I will now hand over the proceedings to the president of Channak City, Dr. Shivanty Goswami for, to conduct her regular meeting. Shivanty, all yours, thank you.
Thank you, hope I am audible to everybody.
Yes, you are, you are.
Good evening, everybody. Sunanada has already welcomed everybody, so I start right away. I declare the 526th regular meeting of RC Calcutta Channak City open. The meeting, meeting minutes of the last meeting has been sent in mail, can I take it to be confirmed?
Confirmed, confirmed.
Okay, thank you, Ramadi. Now regarding the announcements of the club, last, we usually have a monthly project which is known as Nono Anemia, which was held in the 15th of May in Mansur Habibullah Memorial School in which we went for hemoglobin determination of eighty-five schoolgirls and we distributed the iron capsules to all those who had their hemoglobin below eleven. At the same time, we also carried some goodies for them and we, one of the doctors from our club, Dr. Uthpal Doktor, he spoke about the awareness of anemia amongst the schoolgirls because we know that's a burning problem amongst ladies of our country. Tomorrow on 25th of May, we will be having our usual, another monthly program which we have named as Shayanne because it's to do with the senior citizens and we usually regularly go to their Bhridhabash or old age home every month. So tomorrow we are going again, we don't go with materials, we go with our time. We spend time with them, we sing for them, we dance for them, we recite for them, we do dramas for them. We also make them do, you know, cultural activities so that they are involved and now it has become a habit of that Bhridhabash which is known as Miranayi Bhridhabash and they welcome us and wait for us every month. So tomorrow evening, we are going to go for all the members out here, please remember.
Incasm of the middle apartment, more than one eighty-five. HR City for us done, so no meds and upper GI endoscopy were normal.
Then I think somebody is reading the upper GI endoscopy.
Yeah, I've, I've already, I've.
Mute, mute in peace.
I've muted, I've muted.
Sorry for the interruption.
Yeah, sorry.
Who is talking about myths and Kasinama out there? Okay, so and on 29th of May, we are joining the program of, district program of Robindra Jayanti Toubu Moner Eko at Rotary Shodun and our club members are going to perform a Sutinatuk out there. And on our next regular meeting for all those who are present here is on 11th of June and that's also a very important date for us because that's going to be the club officer training seminar, the COTS and that's going to be held at 7pm at Kimli Restaurant. So please be there for the COTS. Now, June is a pride month, we know and inclusion is something which we talk about in Rotary. We have done programs with LGBTE sector previously and because June is the pride month, on 19th of June, we are having a program at commune with the Saffo community and one of them is come to, going to come and talk to us about their issues and they are also going to bring some friends of them so that they can have an interaction with us on that issue. And on, this, this is more about the May-June and since Vritiman is here, Vritiman, could you please make the announcements? Are you ready to? Or not? I think he is busy in another CME, that's what, okay, I'll make his announcements. He actually logged in just because I requested him, he is in a CME of medicine. So regarding the announcements, we had the birthday of Rotaryian Mumu Ghosh on 12th of May. I think, I don't think Mumu is here anyway, happy belated birthday Mumu. And this is more or less about our club announcements and I won't make it lengthy but we know what we are here today for, we are here to listen to a prolific speaker whom all of us have heard somewhere or the other. Now, I asked for a short CV, he has given me one which cannot be short because he has got so much to do. So it's Rotaryian Shubojit Roy for you ladies and gentlemen. He joined Rotary Garden Bridge in 1996 and became the president in 2002, 2003. He served again as a president of Rotary Calcutta Metro City which is your club in 2012, 2013. Now he has served as the district public image relation chair on four occasions and is designated most important as the district public image chair again in the coming year, 2025, 26. He has also served as AG District Secretary, Admin District Director, Correct Chair etcetera, has got a long association with Rotary. He is a Zavarian as far as his alma mater is concerned. He co-founded Connections and is a media editorial strategist for the past thirty-three years and to us, he is a prolific speaker. Now before we ask him, we thought what we are going to ask him to speak on, we know public image is a very, very important aspect of Rotary but many of the Rotarians itself I feel not have exact idea about what public image of Rotary means. So we have requested him to speak on the public image of Rotary and since he has got also a lot of association with the Thalassemia in creating awareness about Thalassemia and since Thalassemia is going to be the burning project of the next year I feel because of our TG's, you know, specification. So I have also requested him to set a few glimpses about Rotary and Thalassemia. So welcome Rotaryian Shubojit Roy, the stage is all yours.
Thank you, good evening everyone, thank you, Dr. Shivanty for that introduction of mine. Please forgive me for my voice and I'm suffering from a terrible, bad, terribly bad cold.
That I can see, I can hear and understand.
And but this is something which is close to my heart. Both the, both the topics that come, one is my bread and butter, the other one is my passion and what better opportunity to speak to people I know for so many years, I mean for decades actually and worked with them on several occasions, Ryla and so many other projects. Channak City has been very dear to my heart and also other members, guests who have joined in, some of them very good friends and, and my colleagues in Rotary. So what is public relation? This would be an interactive session, I, I have a slide presentation, a PPT but then I would also like to interact with you, find out from you your idea of what a public image, public relations and very often heard these days, PR, PR is a very oft-repeated word in almost every circle that we move around. But what is your idea? Maybe one of you or a few of you can actually come forth with your idea of PR and then I would exchange my ideas, what we believe should be a proper route to good public image building exercises. So can I have anyone from you, all of you are so experienced in your fields of work, what is your idea of public image or public relations that you understand? You can actually come forth with your ideas. In fact, I can get new ideas from you. So maybe any one of you or you would like to share your thoughts?
Probably it's how the world perceives Rotary.
Yeah, the perception that the mass people have about Rotary and also how we represent Rotary's work and everything to people is kind of branding of Rotary so that we can reach out to people like if anyone is Rotary and anyone is looking at us and they can say like they are Rotary and they are, they signify this, this, this things. So reaching out to mass people, this is the perception and as, you know, entire branding and perception that people have about Rotary.
So in a nutshell, Motrisha actually has done what I had to do for the next maybe ten minutes. So she's actually completed my presentation herself, perfect explanation and I think Motrisha, you have hit the nail on its head. Yes, what public relations, public image is all. There are two form, formats which we adopt for a proper public relation. One is visible, what we see and the other is what we communicate through words, that is what we speak. So I think there are the reasons why we actually get hold of experts to define our public image or public relations, even Rotary does at the national and the international level. We employ experts who actually run this public image campaign of Rotary simply because there are few techniques that we adopt to maximize the outreach, maximize our public image programs that we undertake and that is exactly what we are going to go through this slide. I'll try and share this from my, yes, I think it is, it's, can you see this?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so basically, this would be a campaign. Why, what is public image of brand Rotary that we, that we are discussing about? As you can see from the slide, is basically what people outside the world, that's exactly what Motrisha said, that what they think about us when we, when they hear the word Rotary. So all this is shaped by what actions we undertake, the activities that we engage in and then the impact that we have. And basically, the actions and activities are very important to get the right impact. So what happens is we have, unlike the major corporations or big companies who have huge budgetary allocation for promotion of their brand, we are actually with a core strength of 1.2 billion, million members that constitute the strength of Rotary, over forty-six thousand clubs and of course, the, the fact that we are visible in more than two hundred and twenty countries. So that is the strength of Rotary that we actually, we, we encash upon to make our impact greater. Now, though these are the, these are the, basically the people who thought that Rotary has that power, that they should be part of this. Now all of these people at some point of time have been part of the Rotary movement. Now you might ask some, somebody who has not seen this before or people who are new to Rotary might be asking how they are connected. Now most of them either have endorsed something that Rotary espouses, like if we start from the picture right at the top, Shahrukh Khan was actually somebody who espoused the cause of polio when no celebrity had actually been the face of that. And what the wonder that he did was, there was a period in, at one point of time when the minority community was not getting their children vaccinated, I mean the polio drops. So this man came into the picture and his, now this might sound very, very narrow kind of a narrative but actually, his presence, his words helped us increase the bandwidth with that community and now there's a point when almost hundred percent of the community that, the minority community that he also belongs to immunizes their children with polio drops. Now similarly, the, this is self-explanatory where Mr. Amitabh Bachchan is, has been a face of polio for a very long time, even till the point that India became polio-free in 2014. Mittun Chakrabarti, I think many of you know, actually was the first person to espouse the cause of Thalassemia that we are actually now talking about. Similarly, Shomitro Chatterjee became a brand ambassador for the Thalassemia program in our district. Now the rest of them, Mr. Sunil Gavaskar has been a great champion of Thalassemia and work related to pediatric surgery, heart surgery in Bangalore. He in fact continuously supports such surgeries and also being part of our district's Thalassemia program through Rotary Club of Garden Bridge. Now, these people have been all John Pope, Pope, John Pope, Pope, I, I don't remember his name. I think John Pope, Paul, Ronald Reagan, Armstrong, Bill Gates have all been part of the Rotary. So that is the strength of Rotary and they have been the ambassadors of, of our movement. But we feel that Rotarians are the biggest ambassadors of our movement. I mean, if it is public image, then it has to be Rotary. Now we always say, the old timers say that please wear your pin with pride, your Rotary pin with pride because that is something that creates our connect with the, with the community. Now, how brand image will help a Rotary club, very important for individual Rotary club also because it expands our, the community's understanding of what Rotary does. Now a lot of people think, used to think at one point of time that Rotary was a club of elites but I think that perception has changed. That, that the tag of the whining dining elites have changed into people who are seriously people of action and that is the impact that we have had on the community through our activity. Now, the other part is very important, membership. You know, unfortunately Rotary, mostly in our parts, that is in India, have given very little space for the public image building exercises. They have not considered this important and perhaps one of the reasons why we have so much of attrition, we have lack of membership growth as such, especially in our part, is the fact that we have not been very proactive in promoting our public image. So this is very important and vital because it also gets in partnerships. You know, these days we talk about CSR's. Now CSR can only happen when we have a positive, strong and consistent communication that is public image and that is where the role of public image is so important. And of course, it is very, it's very simply, it, it gets us noticed in our community and of course, it also helps the membership which are present, the current membership, it, it, it can be inspirational for them and of course, it expands, helps expand our reach. So some of the key strategies that the Rotary clubs can actually implement is defined here where you can actually communicate what your club stands for and the impact on the community, maintain consistency in messaging, visuals and storytelling. Now here I must come in with one piece of advice or suggestion that every Rotary club must have one person dedicated to communicating with the community, with the media and even when they are communicating through the social media channels, there should be one appointed person from the club who is good with communication. Now very often it happens, there are many clubs where are there, where there are multiple people communicating and also resulting in conflict, conflict of communication. So there is something which is, this is something which is very important where the Rotary, Rotarians and the Rotary club leaders should maintain consistency. And then, then again, this is very similarly related, using Rotary logos, templates and branding materials from Rotary Brand Centre. You know, if you follow many clubs with their banners and visuals, you might see which are not in, which are not actually consistently following Rotary's mandated visual templates and the required branding materials which, which, which results in Rotary clubs having different kinds of logos. Now, we all know that Rotary's mark of excellence is the only authorized Rotary logo that you can use with your club's name. Very often we find clubs with only the wheel and the name below it, which is, which is again wrong and it should not happen. So this is something which, as I said, a public image chair that is our nowadays almost mandatory that a club should have, should be aware of this and should help and guide the other fellow Rotary members, presidents, leaders to follow the same. Now this is something, these days we find Rotary clubs very active. I find many Rotary clubs very active on the social media. But again, social media has its pitfalls also. So when you are communicating on social media with visuals of projects, achievements, events etcetera, you should maintain a kind of consistency which will actually result in proper storytelling. If you are trying to, if you are trying to do a, do a coverage or say of a project, you should maintain that consistent line of communication which will result in actually helping people understand what you do. I'll give you a small example, our club was featured with, by the Rotary Internationals, the rotary.org, the website that Rotary has, following our story in the Facebook that was published in the Facebook. So that is actually an impact it had on the international, the people who run the rotary.org and we could get ourselves featured there. Now similarly, many clubs also are featured from India and I think maybe, if I'm not mistaken, maybe your club has been featured too. But what we need to do is have a very consistent presence in our social media pages. Recommended that a club should have a website but then these days many clubs are actually doing the communication through social media handles. Facebook is one of them but I feel even because a lot of visuals are the need of the art these days. So Instagram handles would also help engaging and increasing followers and people who can later on become stakeholders and partners in your program. So post as many videos and stories, visuals which should have you in action. So that is something that we are also stressing on. And as far as traditional media goes, a lot of people these days actually do not give much importance to the traditional media. But I'll tell you what, more than television and newspaper, radio has a greater impact. Radio is something which is often we do not attach much importance to radio but FM and radio stations play a very important part in reaching out to the rural segment apart from the, the urban people. So again, it increases our public image if we are regularly featured in the radio stations and television networks. As far as the newspapers are concerned, I, I have over the years felt that we are yet to know the technique of writing the press releases, very important. Press releases should be written in a pyramid fashion where the most important, the most important part of the news project or program that you are undertaking should be right at the top. So that is the art of writing a press release and it instantly catches the attention of the editorial heads who actually write the, releases the newspapers articles. So that is one thing and also the person who should be in charge of communication in the club should have the entire database with him or her wherein at the moment you actually complete a, a project or program and your club does so many projects, programs and most of the clubs do in fact, a huge amount of projects and programs wherein they do not actually get in touch with the local media to highlight what they do. And this is something that we need to come out very strongly and aggressively to increase our bandwidth with the community. So as I said, it's written in the press releases, I just mentioned to you, how a press release should be done. Now, of course, this is one thing that is, that is something that I find very important, testimonials. You know, you have thousands of beneficiaries from the work that you do every week or every month or say every year annually. Now how many testimonials would we, do we take? And testimonials these days are mostly video testimonials because we use so much of social media or maybe uploading in the websites even if, of course, the rotary.org, the rotaryindia.org does not, I think, accept video uploads. Yes, that is one problem that we need to actually work out because video testimonials are very important to strengthen the work that we do, to strengthen the impact of the work we do, work we do and also as, as I have written, deepen the engagement. You know, it increases the relationship between the beneficiary and the person, the, the club which is actually doing this work and it is, it has a lot of prospects in future wherein they can actually get in. And it is, it has a lot of prospects in future wherein they can actually get into doing more work effectively. Now, as, as I've already mentioned, we need to stay active on Facebook, Instagram, LinkedIn, X, whatever to maximize outreach. Again, another important part, a bit technical, I understand the technical, but these days almost everybody understands this. Using hashtags, using hashtags increases the reach of a, a post or whatever you are posting on the social media. Now, whenever we actually post something to do with health. We should attack the people who matter, not only rotarians, why not the health minister or people related to the. To the, to the, to those departments who actually work in those areas because that makes you visible. That they, it also attracts a lot of attention from them which in turn can actually in future help you. Also, as I said, we are the biggest brand ambassadors. You might talk of all the big names, but end of the day, if we are not doing our work. We are not promoting our, our work to the community through ourselves. That is all, every one of you, you have your personal social media handles. You have your personal outreach and you can be the biggest ambassadors for rotary. And, and also basically share your experiences with them. Now, collaborating with community influencers and partners, all of you know these days collab is a word which is so much heard of. Now, yes, it's very important collaborating with social media influencers play a very big role in actually maximizing your outreach. Now, collaborating with corporate partners also in turn bring in not only participation. But also funds for your programs. If you have a trust, you have a corporate partner, bring in that money through CSR and collaboration is very important. But they will only collaborate with you when you have a very strong public image. And that is why public image is perhaps the most important part of rotary. Because each one of you, when you actually entered rotary, it was somebody telling you. And that was the first public image promotion that you encountered when you joined rotary. So that is how important public image of rotary is, that is how you gain in numbers. So, again, another part we always say is try and participate in number of programs with other organizations. Like it is either co-hosting events or even participation is very important. Wherein your brand logo is featured in their promotional materials, very important. Because we often find that rotary is, is not visible in many areas where it should be. So we should, as, in a, a while back, Shunandhada was mentioning about that cultural program or. Even Shivant was mentioning about a culture program, that is the kind of partnership that rotary should have. Now, this is rotary driven program, but other organizations doing programs should also have rotary as partners. If we join them and this increases our visibility. Now, monitoring this is of course a difficult job, very difficult. But I'll tell you, metrics play, numbers play a very important role in every kind of social media activity that we participate in. Metrics are very important for sponsors, metrics are very important for partners. Metrics are very important for stakeholders like the CSR donors or other, other collaborators. So that is where we need to take care of the, and these days. Analysis of metrics is very simple in, in social media. And this has been made even simpler now with increasingly better technology and techniques. And this should be another way of increasing our outreach. Now, yes, this is very important because negative and miss, negative comments. Negative or misinformation often destroys much of the good work that we do. So this is something that needs to be taken care of and addressed at the grassroots. If there are issues within a club, it should be sorted out within the club and it should not be in the public domain. So that is one area which perhaps the leadership has to take care of for every club and that is from big and small. Everyone has to take care of this so that anything which is negative should not be available in the public domain. So, we need to develop a strong club brand identity. As I mentioned, these, whatever I said is leads to a strong club brand identity. And of course, we need to define our club's story and mission. Now, every club has their own absolutely, a mission or story which is absolutely their own domain. I mean, they, they are, they are capable of doing things like our club would be very happy to be seen as a club. Which is doing a lot of work in the area of thalassemia prevention. Maybe your club is trying to do something in cervical cancer. But these stories are, needs to be told and that should be the club's mission so that the impact has, is increased. Now, using digital and social media effectively, I, I mentioned it and I think this is, I think, very simple nowadays. Social media being at the fingertips of everyone and we need to use the Rotary Brand Centre. I think this is one thing which I always tell clubs that the Rotary's Brand Centre is something that we need to use. Not only effectively but always so that whatever we project, whatever we say is actually absolutely correct to the team. And of course, in organizing high impact community events also means a lot of money. So we need to have resources to do it, but if we have collaborators as we mentioned, if we have sponsors, anything is possible. We can always do major events, major programs which enhances our public image and, and our reach. So, these are more or less repeats of what I said. So ultimately, it's always the rotary members who are the people who promote rotary's public image, public relations. And the club president has to play a very important role in the entire scheme of things. Ultimately, the members drive the rotary movement and the president leads the rotary clubs effectively. To ensuring greater engagement, credibility and of course impact. So that was it all about, public image of rotary. And coming back to thalassemia, I think thalassemia needs advocacy at its highest levels. I always believe, I have been doing this thalassemia bit since nineteen ninety-two. When I was still in my college, I first learned about thalassemia from a very major film actor. Who's now also a political personality and in the, in the bargain what I could gather from him was actually. Taking care of those who were affected by thalassemia. Those days, awareness levels were pretty low and the fact that two carriers should not marry. Was a much later development. There was a very famous saying those days which Shrimitul Chakravarti had coined. Chikuji noik, kushti vichar noik, rokto vichar korun. So that became almost like an anthem when we used to travel across the districts to raise funds. For the treatment of the affected thalassemia patients. But post two thousand, I would say two thousand fifteen, ten, the focus shifted on eradication of thalassemia through awareness. Creation about the trade carriers either not marrying or not having children with, I mean, not having children. Basically, those days even I would, it was surprising even the gynecologists did not have much knowledge. I remember in the late nineties when the, even the doctors were not very aware of the fact. That actually two trade carriers not marrying and having children were like, could result in thalassemia major. And the percentage count was also not very clear to many of them. But post two thousand ten, the focus shifted to advocacy where we went hammers and tong. And to create awareness about the fact that the carrier test, detection test had to be done. I think, I can be corrected by Shivant or any other doctor here, I think those days the HPLC test did not exist.
Or even if it existed, it was not available widely in the governments, the people couldn't get access to it.
So, so we had a very tough time going around telling people that you need to test your blood. And most of them were not even agreeable to test the blood. And if there are, if there were positive cases who were carriers detected, they did not disclose it to their. To, in their homes or the people they were, they were getting married to. But so, so the, the facts of the matter is Rotary International District three two nine one. Under Dr. Homchoduri has taken the lead to create awareness across the districts. I think two very major, but two major positive steps that we saw was the registrars getting, getting sensitized. And also the MOU that was signed with Boggs, I think a few days back, I think there was an MOU. I think those are very important steps. But ultimately, I, for me personally, having been a volunteer, volunteer actively for the last three decades. What I gather is unless and until the, the stakeholders are increased, the number of stakeholders are increased. Like polio, we need to have a polio kind of situation where the number of stakeholders. Who have active interest in the health sector. People like, I mean, organizations like CDC, WHO, the local municipal, the, the local municipal health departments. The state governments and the central government needs to be extremely, needs to be extremely active to actually tackle this. Otherwise, this will not happen, this will not happen simply because we are too small an organization to create an impact. Secondly, I think there is a lack of positive, positive support from the government stakeholders. And that can be political also, the reason can be political also. But finally, it has to be the government which has to take the onus of creating. A serious, making a serious impact on this awareness program. Because when I wrote to the, and now let me just come in a bit here with a program that I undertook in nineteen twenty twenty-two. Resulting in Mr. Johar Shorkar raising a question in the Rajasabha's questionnaire. Where I was actually getting in touch with the elected representatives of Lok Sabha and Rajasabha. Unfortunately, only seven Rajasabha and Lok Sabha members reverted back to me. Among them, we had Mr. Sashi Tarur also and the Union Surface, Transport and Surface Ministry. Along with the Union Health Ministry reverted back to me. And the Union Health Ministry wrote to me that there can not be a law because the health is under concurrent list. With the state and the center having equal powers and a law cannot be enacted because of this. So mandatory tests are out of question. So we now need only to sensitize people just like polio. Polio was actually also a sensitization process wherein we could actually make people aware of the fact. That you had to be given two polio drops to eradicate polio. And that is how we succeeded, two thousand fourteen, we were able to, we were actually able to eradicate polio. So I think I, I see hope in the people, only people can make it happen. And to make that happen, I think every stakeholder has to play a more proactive role. And it cannot be in fits and starts. So I proposed a project to Rotary that we should adopt and this can, this is also open to your club also. Through our RCCs, we can adopt a pilot project where we take care of ten or twenty or forty villages or fifty villages. And declare them thalassemia free after screening the people there of marriageable age or people under eighteen. Of, of, of people who can actually be positive, maybe trade carriers. And, 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 and declare that particular area thalassemia free. So that is a pilot project that I've been talking about. I've, I've also given this proposal to the D G E. I haven't heard from him as yet, but I think if the clubs can get together and forms, form small pools of villages. Or areas where, which are thalassemia endemic. You know, we have, yesterday I was at a place called, we all know Chuchura. And in Chuchura, I, I just found out that the Shador Hospital of Chuchura had conducted a, 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 a twenty-two thousand capsule test. And they found almost ten percent of the people were thalassemia carriers. And that is the average in West Bengal, around between nine and twelve percent is average. And we can actually locate those places and rotary can also actively do capsule testings. I mean, do sample studies and give it to the government because a lot of government hospitals, all of you, the doctors of course know better than me. That many of the hospitals have thalassemia control units which are not working, which are not working. That's a, that's a sad part and I think this is where Rotary comes in as, not only as advocacy partners. But also which we can help through such sample studies and surveys and give the data to the government. I think the way forward, I don't see thalassemia being eradicated in the next twenty-five years. If we are going by the data and the way we have been working. But I think maybe in the next fifty years, if the, if the stakeholders are, are serious about this. We can eradicate thalassemia, but it is a long term process, it is not an individual's task. Again, I think we should not be bogged down by individual names and you know, we, we are not individual in this. It has to be a collective, collaborative as we said in my presentation for the, the public image also. It has to be collaborative, collective and all clubs get together, putting their heads together and I think making this happen. If we can have thirty-five zones in Rotary District three two nine one, we can have thirty-five blocks of villages. Of maybe three thousand five hundred villages where we can declare them thalassemia free. This is open to the district governor and the leaders, if they have the vision, it will be implemented. But I think individually clubs can do it. If my club joins hands with your club and if you, Gautam is from Amori and there are a few other clubs, we can join in. We can have a project by ourselves. It will, it is open to everybody's concurrence, but thank you so much for being so patient listeners. I don't know how much I could make an impact on you, but this was great talking to you, thank you so much.
Thank you very much for your deliberation and I would like to chip in that you said you have been working with thalassemia since nineteen ninety-two. And that reminds me, that was the year when I was in the final year of MBBS long back. And the picture which we saw about thalassemia then was even worse. At that time, the small children about eighteen years, fourteen years, they used to be admitted in the hematology department. For repeated blood transfusion in their life. At that time, dysphore oxymann, the chelating agent was not available so easily. And we used to know that these are the children who are going to die within one or two years. They used to have huge spleens or already having splenectomy done. And all the ward, that is the hematology ward of the medical college was their second home. Because they never used to go to, they couldn't go to the school, they couldn't play, whatever they played, they played in that ward only. Okay, because half of their life was in that ward. But then gradually, I am talking about say two thousand ten, two thousand twelve. When dysphore oxymann and the chelating agents, they came about and the blood transfusion was easily available. We even have delivered thalassemic mothers in medical college. We even have delivered thalassemic mothers in medical college. And right now also we have thalassemic patients as pregnant patients, but that is not what we want. We do not want thalassemia major ladies to become mothers. We do not want thalassemia in the world. Because that particular mothers, they have to undergo about forty fifty units of blood transfusion in their pregnancy. That's so tough. And gradually, when they go on having transfusions, they develop antibodies to so many things and they require a lot of tough cross matching with the blood and their life becomes miserable. And gradually, when we have come down from there nineteen ninety two to say two thousand ten twelve. We have also seen that the chorionic villus biopsy coming in where when two traits by chance, you cannot prevent two traits, you can prevent two traits marrying. But you cannot prevent two traits falling in love. So if they fall in love and they want to marry, you cannot prevent them from marrying. But how can you prevent a thalassemic child? That should be our principle. And so the chorionic villus biopsy chipped in. And that's how we saved many thalassemic, we prevented thalassemic children from being born. But still, all said and done, the awareness about thalassemia is yet to be, you know, strengthened. Because we and and as you said that Bengal Ops Gynecology Society has rightly signed a move with Rotary. Yeah, that's because the gynecologists definitely have got a bigger role because the young couple, the eligible couple and the newly married couple, they come to the gynecologists and the newly pregnant woman, they come to the gynecologist and definitely it is their part, they are on their part to do the thalassemic screening. Uh before they become pregnant or before the pregnancy is continued. But still, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say we haven't improved. We have improved. But lots more needs to be improved. And as you said rightly that our northeastern India and our west Bengal actually is known as the thalassemic capital of um India. Because the incidence is has been found to be genetically saying or by nutrition or whatever the incidence is more in the northeastern part of India and in the eastern part of India. Anyway, we definitely hope to join hands as far as this deadly disease is concerned. And thank you also for talking um abreast about the public image of Rotary, even so many things were not known to me. Um so I'm sure all the listeners today have gained a lot of on the points about the public image. So such a such a lot can be done nowadays because we have the digital thing in our, you know, in our control. Just a motivation, just a passion to do it regularly is something which is needed. Anyway, thank you once again. Any comments from the from the platform, from the other members, please?
Yeah, I mean, thank you, Subhijidha, for the wonderful session. And it is always, you know, privileged to listen to you. I mean, you know, whenever I'm listening, it was like always add on to my knowledge. So really thanks to you. Uh so definitely for the thalassemia part, I mean, it is really great. I mean, we are in uh so i- if you can, you know, help us to understand how we can implement in our RCC or or in those villages and all, so definitely that'd be great. So I'll get in touch with you all with that. Uh about the public image, I have actually two questions for you. Uh because see, uh publicly, everybody understood, actually, the public image is very much important. But the problem is, there are clubs who are actually not that much efficient into that social media side. I mean, it's not, I mean, when we're talking about updating something personal, so I can update, I know I can click picture, I can update, but when coming to uh public image and all, so it require little bit of more professional thing, I mean, look structured way. So probably most of the club I saw that like, you know, I even I heard from them that they don't have people, they don't want, that's what they do like, not unable to, you know, uh represent that those their projects and everything into the social media. So uh the question to you is that like, is there any way that like, you know, for those clubs, like, you know, district will can be able to help you? Uh you know, to to understand that, okay, how they can do that, like uh I believe like, you know, a couple of years back, there is one post they, district has, R I has created probably, that's a club executive secretary. That's probably one of the paid posts just because of that only, so that like, you know, they can hire a person from the outside and get the things done, like updating the projects and all. So I mean, is there any way that like, you know, district can also take any initiative?
Thank you, Gautam, for all the compliments. Three things to your question, three answers actually. One is those who are old timers here, Gautam, I think you are how many, two, three years old?
Oh yeah, I'm very, very new, just three years.
Rimadi or others who are old timers here, they would know that we have a thing called the family of Rotary. So we never, you know, we always, there were, there are clubs which always used to call the the Rotary children as Rotarylets.
Rotarylets.
Rotarylets, Rotarylets.
I don't have, I'm a bachelor, so I don't know how it is called. I can always get away. But the thing is, uh 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 you spoke about the executive secretary. So uh most of the clubs, I think ninety nine percent of the clubs use one of their members as district, I mean, the executive secretary. They don't hire somebody simply because of the budgetary problems or the growing expenses of Rotary, very difficult to hire a person or even hire an agency to do it. So I would always say that the district is, I I mean, for from first July twenty twenty five to thirtieth June twenty twenty six, I am there always available, like I've been before also. I'll be available to guide clubs. So I'll be very happy to guide clubs to effective digital operations. But I would say that within the club, you have family members, children who or the next generation who are extremely efficient. I mean, they are not efficient. I would say they are uber efficient. They're like high, high zone, like they do things like, I mean, just hold the mobile and I know in a in a few seconds, they complete things.
Better than us.
Yes. I would always suggest Rotary clubs which have a challenge. I mean, not all Rotary clubs have this challenge. But there are clubs, I'm I'm absolutely in agreement with you. There are clubs with which have uh which have challenges. They should use their next gen or immediate family members who can help, because who are expert. In a way, it has a two-way effect on them. If they also get used to what Rotary is and might possibly be members in future. Or uh they are interested, they get interested in what Rotary does. You know, if you do a, you do an average, maybe ten percent of them can be converted into Rotarians later on. One, and B, you get your job done easily, free of cost, without explanation. So I always would suggest that apart from using the district resources. Even when I'm not there, maybe year after, somebody would be a district public image chair, who would have a committee, who can actually guide them uh to this. And then the third one, as I said, is, I mean, understood. So I would say uh uh this is possible. I mean, what you said, we can resolve this issue.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. And thank you for again sharing all the knowledge with us.
Most welcome.
Comments from any anybody else? Rimadi, anything? Ranjanadi, anything?
No, I want to tell that it is, first of all, it is very good to hear from Subhujit. As Gautam told, every time I hear to you, I know something new and I like the way you talk. The calm and the positive way, there is a positive positivity in your speech every time that you that I hear you. One, that is the thing. And the thalassemia, that that you told that it is really a challenge that we have in our club also, we have done more than twenty schools in our area, entirely area, the thalassemia carrier test. But I I don't know how it has helped the society, you know. Whenever we got some some patients, one who is carrier positive, they 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 used to severe the relation with the club and ourselves. My my myself, okay. And after that, when the girl got married, got a child and he had a very, very hmm bad childbirth history, only for this thalassemia maybe, she was a carrier. But then after that, everything is settled, then she is in a good touch with me. She was actually a shukarna, uh shukarna project from Raju Rajgarh yesterday. Uh you know, that. And so this is the thing that we can understand that thalassemia is a big, big challenge. Whatever move we are signing, whatever we are doing, we should be money telling the society that how to do that. And for Shunandada, thanks for extending the invitation. Okay.
Yes, yes. For the twenty seventh, hopefully, we are looking forward to a lot of Rotarians joining in. So we want to do a collective Rotarian evening. For RD Berman and Sholil Choudry. And this is going to be led by one of our club members, Shohini Roy Choudry. Because she belongs to the RD Berman family.
Good.
So she is the one who's taken the initiative and she wants to have this uh thing. And Subhujit, of course, is also coordinating on this. We'll come back to you later on. But talking about thalassemia and what Subhujit rightly said is the awareness very important. We all know that. So how more we can make people aware of it, the better it is. And we are doing our part in that. Uh recently, therefore yesterday, we were in Beldanga. Because we had gone there for an eye eye operation, because our club was sponsoring ten eye operations. And then we came, we we requested them that we would like to do a thalassemia awareness camp and found out that thalassemia awareness was never done in that area. So that was the interesting part. So Subhujit again led that part. And there were these uh club RCC members who were present. And the interesting part is these RCC over there, they go house to house for finding out various, you know, mainly to do with heart. Uh you know, conditions and all that. So we requested them now, please also talk about thalassemia. Because you're going into homes who are not aware of what thalassemia is all about. They've got young girls or boys who are going to get married. Talk about it. So they said they will. And that's how we can spread. One man can spread to hundred. And that way it becomes a massive awareness campaign.
That's definitely.
I thought I'll just share that with you, yeah.
Definitely, because even in uh health system, we say that some somebody from the community goes and talks to the mothers, if somebody from the community goes
Absolutely.
Families, like the anganwadi workers, the health assistant female and all, then they are accepted more than doctors even going and talking to them.
Exactly, exactly.
One more thing is the multiplying effect. We always talk about the multiplier effect. When we do such awareness programs, like, you know, you sometimes get to a place where there are hardly twenty people. But that should not be demotivating because our calculation is hundred into twenty, that is two thousand. I mean, that is how we, in fact, Beldanga was in a way an eye opener. Because the uh the two lady uh who lady who were there, the two ladies who were there. One was a former corporate, corporate counselor from the C P I M party. The other person was from some other party who was actually a terapant, a gen community. So they two then decided that they are going to spread the word amongst their community and I mean, is actually a better impact.
That spreads like fire basically. They can cock in the community, it spreads like fire and it has more acceptability than you and I talking to them.
Yes, absolutely. That is what I was saying, that if each and every one of us, we can make a difference.
Yeah.
All you need to do is just talk about it wherever you get a chance. And the other part, you know, that mentioned about this, how to involve your next generation into Rotary. Uh my Shamusri and I, because Shamusri, right from the her early days when the kids were very young, used to take them out and, you know, do projects. And they understood what giving back to the society is all about. Eventually, daughter has now become a Rotarian. And the husband, the the Jama is also become a Rotarian. And the son, although doesn't have the time to be a be being a Rotarian, is willing to contribute to the Rotary cause. So whenever we ask him to contribute, he does that. So that itself also is a big thing, you know, they may not be able to. So it like, Subhujit is saying, use them to spread this uh a public image part of it, because they know how to handle the social media. They're very good at all this.
Yeah. Ranjanadi, anything from you? Sharnadi, anything from you?
Yeah. First and foremost, many thanks to both the club presidents, Shunandosha and Dr. Shabunti. For this wonderful invitation. And secondly, just because it's a Zoom meeting, I can't I can't just say, Subhujit, that I begged you and taking back, because I'm sitting at home. So I'm organizing the bag full of knowledge to set it for years and not only next year. This is very useful and for all your information, I would also share that very recently, two, three months, I think, uh we, our club, Rotary Kalakota Ghampo, gets invited, Subhujit for thalassemia awareness camp in Bangkura. Uh and there, I mean, the back was such a high, a high level. That rural girls, that was an institution based camp. And the rural village girls, those who are underprivileged, whatever. They tried their best to understand the, I mean, the difficulties, the importance of thalassemia test and screening. And later, when Shojik was also there, he also witnessed that they themselves came up to the dance and like also they said that we need to test, I do this, my blood test before we get married. And after that, we got many of response from there also, that we want to do and they made their parents. I mean, to be and to agree with this test, because whether we know that village people are not so it's not such easy. Doctor, you want to tell someone's way, agree with me, that it's not so easy to make village people to, it's easy to make them listen to something, but in practically, it's it's really tedious to make them understand that you have to do this. And in that area, from that area. It's really wonderful that we remain thankful to Subhujit, really so. And because how did it start this morning, they themselves tell who started giving the names that we don't want to get married. They tell their parents that we don't want to get married, even if you force us also. If you don't allow us to do this test, because we want to become mother of a healthy child. So it was a wonderful event and next year in my presidency. I uh I would love, Subhujit, once again to join us. And really, really thank you. Thank you, Rima. Um when you're once in a blue moon, we can see her in this area.
See, we, Ranjanai, you, then Gautam, myself, we are the incoming presidents, because I'm repeating the year. So let us get together, even Shabanti's club, Chanok City, let's get together and like, as Subhujit has suggested. Take up the the village project, what he has been done for, you know.
Yes.
To try and get into this thing of declaring villages, whether there is thalassemia or they are thalassemia free. That will be interesting.
Great for them and really.
Can work together.
It's not, it's not that I must say, we're saying that working in village. If our system with our city, that is much, much more, that will enrich much.
Yeah.
When getting the satisfaction from that service is nothing, never comparable with any other city service from roads.
Exactly.
Best part is to walk in village where the test, the where the awareness was was never before.
Correct.
That's the point.
Yeah.
Yeah, may also repeating, don't worry. I'm repeating from long back. But today, Rima. Rima knows when I was and I myself forget when I was. And.
Yes, yes. So see, we already have four clubs already here today.
Yeah.
So we can always.
That is a much level of metro city, whenever metro city call us.
Hmm.
The two Channok City, Rima, I can't imagine what I'm on, have I seen? Uh I don't know which, uh I can't miss this Zoom meeting at least. I always, so it's really well interesting. I love to joke.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other inputs from anybody? Otherwise, I will call for the formal vote of thanks. Akki, you should vote in? No. So, Shunandada, I think.
Yeah, you go ahead. Yeah, you can close the the vote of.
Yeah, we'd request the veteran Rotarian, Rima Chakruthi, to give the formal vote of thanks.
Nobody can become a thank you president, but nobody can become a veteran Rotarian. It is a phrase that I'm hearing for the last twenty three years, when I have been here, I have been, he's a veteran Rotarian. Oh, he used to be, oh, so, okay. So I don't want to be called in that name. Yes, of course, we love the hmm journey in Rotary till now. So thank you, President, for giving me the opportunity to form give the formal vote of thanks. And I thank both the. And I thank both the club presidents and the AG, the AG Ranjuna, that you have come from Gautam. That you have come from other joint, from other club. So my.
I just want to, I'm not current AG, because this has been put on during Providance tenure when I was in.
Sorry. Veteran Rotarian Ranjuna Uchshuddi and very newcomer Rotarian Gautam Mondal. All of you are very, we have, you have enriched yourself and we have also got your presence. That is for the good thing. And Jharnadi, Shunandada and everybody from Metro City, those who are very dear to me. I thank wholly on your full support to our proposal of holding this joint, joint meeting. And thanks to you all for being there. Over to president.
And you are Mr. Subhujit.
Yeah, sorry. I missed on Subhujit because Subhujit, I have told Subhujit that I have learned something new from you. So that's why I think that I missed on Subhujit.
We have already thanked him.
Subhujit's speech is always very good and is very, very convincing way of talking. That is the main thing, you know, many speakers are there, but the way you speak, you can put the things into the head. The thing that he told that we for, three, four, five clubs can get to a point and do the thalassemia project from going to the RCCs and making the aware. It has gone into the head and already started thinking about this and you can make it, make a plan. Then we can go ahead in the coming year. I can make another club who has a very big RCC to join us. Because our RCC is not that much working. So, but it is a bit long for formal vote of thanks. It doesn't come into this. So I will end it and thank you. And the last thing that I want to tell you that I missed Shamusri. I missed all the members who are not there, but I missed Shamusri because Shamusri was there. If Shamusri had been there, she would have told something, then we would have reacted and have a much more fun-filled meeting.
Okay, can we, we can get it back. After you close the meeting, then you can have your chit-chat. So.
Yeah, so remembering, all right, I have terminated the meeting.
Yes.
Of the record, of the record, I am now afraid because this has gone into Rimadi's head, that we can work with all these things, Subhujit. Now you know what is going to happen to me because I am the Murki of the next year also, okay?
Okay, so you are one second.
It is all being recorded.
All being recorded. So I would like to close the recording and then we can chat. And also, I'm closing the meeting for Metro City. So thank you very much. Let me just stop the recording.